Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Good afternoon. For the next item, I am very pleased that we will be sharing with you our recommended fiscal year 2024 budget. You do have details of that recommended annual financial plan in front of you, and Mr. Wack is going to come forward and provide an overview of that presentation. Would like to note that he's also joined by a number of integral members of the budget team. They've put tremendous effort into bringing this forward, and so kudos to Mr. Wack and his team for that. Really appreciate the work done. You'll see that this recommended budget proposal, you know, really does account for priorities surfaced by this board that are present in our strategic plan and, of course, requests from a wide variety of stakeholders. The recommended budget proposal will be considered at a school board public hearing on February 9th before planned approval with any amendments on February 23rd. It will then, of course, be transmitted to the county manager for incorporation into his proposed budget to be presented on March 14th. And of course, it does not yet include any funding for potential salary increases for school employees, which are absolutely a priority and being considered, but those are considered separately during the March countywide budget process. I will also note two items that are likely of interest and budget-related but have upcoming presentations separately are information related to the career ladder second year implementation. That'll be coming forward for the board in February as well as the student fee schedule, which comes forward later in the spring. But those items aside, I am going to turn it over to Mr. Wack to provide you information on my recommended budget for 2324. Mr. Wack?
Thank you, Dr. Cashwell. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. This afternoon, I'd like to share with you the recommended fiscal year 2024 budget. Before I start, again, I wanted to recognize our budget director, Debbie Hargrave, and Amy Barnes is here with us, and unfortunately Maria Wyman was not able to attend today, but definitely appreciate all the effort that has gone into this proposal. The funding priorities reflected in the recommended budget directly align with our strategic plan that has been adopted by the school board. In particular, they support our four cornerstones: safety and wellness, providing support for social, emotional, cultural, and physical needs; academic growth, focusing on core curricula, collectives, and life development opportunities; equity and opportunity, reducing disparities among students from varying demographics and backgrounds; and relationships, encouraging collaboration and engagement throughout the entire community. Looking back at some of the major changes and highlights in our budget development and the availability of funds to meet our students' needs, the current year adopted budget includes 40 additional instructional assistants, 22 new licensed health positions such as nurses, social workers, and psychologists, 12 additional specialized teacher positions, and the first year implementation of our career ladder. Meanwhile, some of the pressure on our general fund budget has been alleviated by our ESAR III grant award, which has been providing funding for 61 full-time positions, capital improvements at the campus of Virginia Randolph, and other initiatives. Furthermore, we have also been able to use one-time federal funds related to the pandemic for heating, ventilation, and air conditioning improvements, student assessment tools, and addressing learning loss, including significant expansion of our summer academy. The fiscal year 2024 recommended budget reflects the following notable changes from the current year. Our general fund budget is increasing by about $15.8 million or 2.6% compared to our adopted budget, and that's based on the target amount that we received from the county manager. Our debt service budget associated with previously approved capital project debt is decreasing by 1%. Our school nutrition fund is increasing by about 5%, primarily due to updated personnel expenses, and our state and federal special revenue funds are remaining relatively flat. So overall, the operating budget from all funds is growing by about 2.2%, but again noting that our 2024 figures do not yet include funding for pay raises, which are a budget priority of the school system and will be considered later in the process. I'd now like to walk through some of our most significant new initiatives included in the fiscal year 2024 recommended general fund budget. So starting with items associated with safety and wellness cornerstone, we have 10 new community resource coordinator positions that are being added to the family and community engagement outreach efforts. Our family and community engagement funds have also been increased to support the opening of the OGG, which is the region's first-of-its-kind full-service community learning center hub. We've added funds for contracted services for psychologists and social workers, and funding is also increasing for HVAC repairs and related equipment leases. Moving to items supporting our academic growth cornerstone, we are converting 20 more exceptional ed instructional assistants from temporary to full-time. We're adding five English-language learner teachers in fiscal year 2024, and that's on top of five that are being added this year from vacancies for a combined increase of 10 ELL teachers. I would note this is in addition to an interpreter and two teacher positions that were recently added at the Welcome Center. Furthermore, we are increasing contracted services for exceptional education students, and we're adding core instructional materials to the general fund budget that had previously been supported by our ESAR grant funds. Now shifting to items related to equity and opportunity, we have eight positions that are being added for expanded opportunities at our A-Centers, and that includes our teacher apprenticeship, home health aid, and cybersecurity technology programs. We have allowed for a tuition increase at the regional Maggie Walker Governor's School, and we're working to eliminate a number of secondary education student fees. Those include physical education uniforms and some others that are related to dual enrollment courses. And we are also covering the cost increase for student PSAT testing. You'll recall that we have been funding that for all ninth and 10th grade students. Moving to items associated with our relationships cornerstone, our communities and schools' efforts are expanding. We have added a resource recently at Highland Springs High School, and we are expanding the number of students participating in the YMCA and Nova swimming programs. And our contribution to the Maymont Foundation is being restored to the pre-pandemic level. And we are also adding funding for a new content management system for the school's website. Finally, we have several items that support our strategic goal that's related to recruiting, retaining, and rewarding our employees. Funding has been added to cover the vast majority of our group health premiums increases. This budget allows for the second year implementation of our career ladder, and that includes increased tuition reimbursement and recognizing more advanced credentials of our employees. The recommended budget also allows for increased pay for attendees of the new teacher academy and daily substitutes that work on Fridays, and those are initiatives that we implemented this school year. We've also included funding for desk audits to allow for potential upgrades for our support positions. And again, in prior years, the recommended budget did not include funding for salary increases, which will be considered later in the process for both county and schools' employees under the county's unified pay plan. So the pie charts before you just illustrate our major spending categories in the general fund. You can see that instruction remains a lion's share of our expenditures at over 75% in 2024. These pie charts just illustrate the major revenue categories of our general fund budget, and you can see the target increase of just over $16.8 million makes up the difference in 2024, and that will likely come from a combination of state and local funds. As I previously mentioned, our federal and state special revenue funds are remaining relatively flat, and these funds are essentially earmarked for specific purposes and programs from our grantors. The fiscal year 2024 budget, special revenue budget, does include personnel costs related to 61 positions for one last year in our ESAR III grant. As we look past the fiscal year 2024 recommended budget, in order to plan for 2025 and beyond, we should consider the following. Our enrollment trends have been somewhat unclear, particularly when considering the impact of the pandemic. We have several allocations of federal grant funds that will no longer be available beyond fiscal year 24. Our safety protocols will continue to impact how we operate our facilities, and social and emotional supports have become even more vital as we consider the long-term effects of the pandemic on students and staff. And finally, compensation will always be a factor as the superintendent advocates to recruit and retain the strongest workforce possible. Looking back and looking forward, I just want to note that we did take into account public input in December, and today are presenting the 2024 recommended budget. And as Dr. Cashwell mentioned, a public hearing is planned for February 9th on that proposal, and the school board will be approving that with any amendments on February 23rd. And the school board will finally be adopting the final version of the 2024 budget on May 11th, and that will incorporate any adjustments from the county, such as for employee compensation. I did want to note that the school board members have hard copies of our 182-page budget document, and that is being posted this afternoon on our website. That concludes my brief overview. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you so much, Mr. Wack and the team. We do appreciate all the work that's gone into this such a thoughtful budget. And of course, we all await March, right, when employee raise information is made known to us. Board members, questions or comments? Reverend Cooper.
Thank you, Ms. Shee. Thank you, Mr. Wack and your team, for this presentation. Can we go to slide seven? The targeted elimination of some student fees, including P-uniforms and some dual enrollment. I'm always a strong advocate for reducing and eliminating any financial burdens to our students and families when it comes to increasing access and opportunities for our students. And since it says targeted elimination of some student fees, could you share with me what criteria is used and what factors are considered in determining which student fees will get eliminated and/or reduced?
Certainly. We have a number of smaller dollar amount fees on the current fee schedule for this school year, one of the ones that we are targeting. So we did look at how much revenue is generated for the schools in each of these fees, and we also have taken a hard look at our dual enrollment fees. J-LARC did conduct a study where they were recommending that school divisions revisit those fees, and that may play into how community colleges fund dual enrollment programs in the future. But that is something we plan to bring to the school board in the spring, to look at all of those fees and try to whittle down some that are really, that would allow for as much equity and access for our students.
I appreciate that.
And if I, I just might, I'd love to add on to that, because I think that's a great question, and I just want to reiterate again my thanks to this board for their support in approving prior budgets the last few fiscal years where we've really chipped away at student fees, beginning with the elimination of technology and laptop fees and number of other fees that families were incurring related to instructional activity expenses, and we continue to chip away at that. We've come a long way, and you'll see that while there will be some fees in place for some of our specialized courses that might involve equipment, particularly in the career and technical ed arena, there is always financial assistance for families who need it, and so those would never be barriers to a student being able to access that course. But we're really mindful in all we do if there are ways we can eliminate any potential barrier. I'm really pleased in this budget that, you know, some work has been done with staff as they're digging into looking at those student fees, particularly around dual enrollment. I know this board has been committed to ways for us to increase that. We've talked about making sure we have staff who are qualified to teach those courses and making some financial investment and training there, but also in our budget, looking for ways where we may begin to eliminate some of those fees.
No, thank you so much, Dr. Cashwell. Second question, could you go to slide nine? So if we could just talk about recruit, retain, and reward. I'm encouraged, first of all, by seeing the increased pay for new teacher academy and Friday daily substitutes, and also the expansion of our career ladder. What I would like to see or talk about is, in our recommended financial plan, is an intentional focus on strategy for recruiting, retaining teachers for our Howard to staff schools. Well, I understand that there are teacher shortages is a challenge nationally and even throughout division. My concern is that we're still seeing trends of concentrations in certain districts and at certain schools. At the start of school year, I know I had a few schools in my district that led the entire division with unfilled full-time teacher vacancies, and it wasn't just in Fairfield. So, you know, how can we in our financial plan spell out recruitment retention strategy that includes funding specifically tied to providing financial incentives, professional development, tuition reimbursement, or whatever strategies to specifically address those hard-to-fill schools? Because I believe that data shows that our Black and Brown teachers are in high numbers, higher numbers, in our Black and Brown schools with a higher population of Black and Brown students. And the National Education Association itself has data that shows that Black educators have significantly more student debt compared to white educators, $68,000 compared to $54,300 average. And so one reason is Black families have less generational wealth, their children want to become teachers, they're going to have to borrow more money. So the analogy I could use is say if I know that I have significantly more debt, an incentive to have me to, you know, work in our school would be possible to be more enticing. We have the data to support the schools that historically faced the challenges year after year. So how can we include in this plan something that can speak to that, you know, so we can be equitable, but also make sure that we have equity and equality enrolled in that? Because, I mean, it's, I know it's a lot, but I'm just...
No, it's a critically important area, and I saw Mrs. Bolden jumping at the chance to address it because she and her HR team have been working hard in this area. Well, I said she was jumping up, and then she went back. I think Mr. Wack must have said, "I've got you covered," but I'll tell you, they'll probably speak to a number of things, and what I'm thinking of, and we're always looking at ways, both with financial supports but also with the supports needed in the field to do the job well, thinking of, you know, what are those additional supports for staff who may work in really challenging schools so that they have the tools and supports they need to do their job well. So certainly lots of investments have been made there, and I'm also really thinking of some of our teacher residency programs that are looking at that pipeline. We have partnerships with a number of our universities, and not only is this of benefit to the individual while they're in school, perhaps training to be a teacher, they are actually paid on a teacher assistant contract while working through their student teaching in partnership with a master teacher. These are placements, at least with one of our university partners, that are specifically targeting schools that meet the criteria you're talking about. And so also providing them more support coming into the profession, as well as an opportunity to begin earning a paycheck while they're in their student teaching role. So a number of creative things have been done, and we're still looking to push the needle there. I mentioned that the career ladder Phase II presentation is coming in February, so some of this we'll be able to speak to when we get to that portion, because a bit of that is, the types of things you're speaking about are built into those kinds of opportunities outside of this.
Let me be clear, I'm not suggesting that financial motivation is the only resolution. I'm just saying that it's definitely an addendum, another tool, if you will, in the toolbox that was kind of...
Yes. And I would point out, one of the things the team's done masterfully is really listening to teachers, and they've recently engaged in some focus groups with staff in our Howard to staff schools, say, you know, what are the types of things that are difference makers? What would entice you to work in a school, to stay in a school regarding, you know, whether it's financial, or again, what do those supports look like? What are the working conditions? What are we doing to support our educators? So all of those things are absolutely factors.
Dr. Cashwell stole most of what I was going to say, but yes, we are actively working with some focus groups to see what kind of support teachers are looking for. Our entire leadership team has taken a hard look at, there was a separate J-LARC review of teachers leaving the profession versus graduating from programs, and what, how can we innovate around recruitment and retention? And it may not necessarily be teacher pay as much as some of the other supports, behavioral support. So we're, I'm glad to highlight that we're adding 20 more full-time instructional assistants and supports around English-language learners, but that is something we are evolving, and I believe that the county budget, I look forward to see some details at the board supervisors' retreat. There was talk about a new program for mortgage assistance for schools and general government employees moving to the area. So there, I really think we're trying to look outside the box and try to see what we can do.
So are you both saying, "Stay tuned"?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Quickly, go to slide six. I only have two more questions, I'm done, Madam Chair. Under academic growth, during our September and October work sessions, we receive presentations on school accreditation, school accountability, ratings, literacy dropout, and graduation rates. We discuss root calls, analysis, leadership team supports, and the school quality plans address the accreditation. This is more of a kind of question, Dr. Cashwell, regarding how we're communicating our priorities and our financial plan in a way that tells a story of how we're being intentional and responsible to ensuring all of our schools are fully accredited and our students are meeting exceeding academic standards. So for our schools that are accredited with conditions, is there a way to highlight in our financial plan the school quality plans and the budget additions of funding that would help support those school quality plans?
Yeah, and I think that's a great question. I think what Mr. Wack's attempted to do with this presentation similarly is take budget priorities and line them up under categories. And so the one, this category of academic growth, I think speaks to a lot of the areas that are addressed in our school quality plan. So we could parse that out even more, and certainly the slides that are part of this presentation reflect some high-level areas for funding, and you know, you have the detail in front of you, but we'd be happy to go through and just provide you some more detail there.
Well, just for an example, take for instance, when we're highlighting the additional hiring of reading specialists or converting...
That's right.
...to exceptional education instructional assistance full-time, this will directly impact...
Yes.
...the interventions or strategies outlined in, let's say, Fairfield Middle Schools quality plan.
Correct.
I just want to, you know, because the community needs to know that we are attaching financial resources.
Absolutely. And in fact, you know, as the budget's developed, you know, we're looking at school, we're looking at school needs data, you know, certainly listening to our schools, listening to our staff. We talked about what is it in regard to recruitment and retention, but also when we think about academic growth, digging into the data, looking at where we have gaps, and working to make sure we have the right structures and supports and highly-trained personnel, particularly around the literacy. And you've seen that, again, and I've been appreciative, the sport has supported increasing reading specialists and other specialized staff members so that our schools have the supports they need, the coaching they need to make a difference there.
Thanks, Dr. Cashwell.
And I'll add, this is just highlights of increases, incremental changes in the general fund budget. Some of these things are above and beyond what we, of course, what we have been doing. But with our ESAR grant funds, we have had a lot of instructional materials that are really becoming part of the core curriculum. We're going to be able to kind of work through that and not have a fiscal cliff on that side. And meanwhile, we do have 61 positions that are supported with these pandemic relief funds, but there is a reserve that we anticipate that could cover that for multiple years beyond, beyond the expiration of the ESAR funds. And staff are also very, we're very actively looking at the summer academy efforts for 2023 and 2024, and where we can complement the use of these pandemic relief funds to combat learning loss and get our students back on track.
I appreciate that, because we do not want those positions to go away. Last question is this, on slide five, this is the last one for me, Madam Chair. On slide five, under safety and wellness, could we speak to our PBIS program? Are we looking to increase any funding related to providing those Tier I, II, and III supports as it relates to staffing, supports, training, and monitoring?
So many talented staff members with lots to add, so, and I see Dr. Hughes coming forward, so I'll let her tackle that one. But certainly would say we continue to support our PBIS efforts across our schools, and so we know that much of that work is really supported by our administrators and other school personnel, but certainly want to support them in that endeavor. Dr. Hughes?
Oh, sure, absolutely. Thank you for that question, Reverend Cooper, and for keeping that as a priority. As called out in our strategic plan, we are moving towards our goal of 2025 to either having all schools engage in the PBIS process or to have a school-wide intervention program for conduct and discipline and for culture in your buildings. Fortunately, Dr. Grant and I have been able to work together to find money to increase funds for PBIS schools in-house, so we haven't had to ask that in the budget process. But we have increased the funds and have increased our funds within our own budgets for next school year and moving forward.
Well, I appreciate that, because again, to your point, you know, with our strategic plan outlining it, trying to be division-wide and making sure that we do have those necessary supports in place, I really appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much. Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Cooper. Great questions. Let's see, Ms. Atkins?
Thank you, Mr. Wack, for your presentation. On slide five, more contracted psychologists and social workers. So in the space of well-being and positive behavioral outcomes, can you help me understand how we're going to determine how many we need? I know that there's a shortage in this space, and I'm wondering, you know, how are we going to acquire this level of expertise in determining, also determining where they're going to be placed? Is that defined?
Yeah, before Dr. Hughes steps up, yeah, I was just, again, this is just more of an incremental change. We did add 22 licensed health professionals in this year's budget, and this is a change in that we're changing our operating budget to allow for outside consultants to help with our psychologist and social worker needs, but that's really driven by need and...
And I say, I ask the question because I understand we have those positions.
Yes, ma'am.
We have funding to pay. So the question is more, so how are we going to recruit and entice them? Are we going towards contracting because we know it's going to continue to be challenging? However, even though we're going to try to contract, do we feel that we are going to be able to recruit in a contract space? And if so, how do we determine how many? And it's important so that I understand from a budget perspective what the costs are.
Sure. So yes, yes, and yes to your questions. So we are still actively recruiting for the positions that we have open, because obviously we know it will be most beneficial to have our own school psychologist and school social workers on our staff. We work very closely with HR to recruit our employees and the individual supervisors for those areas who oversee school-based mental health, Liz Parker and Jen Rucker, work with organizations across Virginia and really across the nation to recruit as well. And both of them go to colleges. I mean, we're doing everything we can to try and recruit, but we know there is a shortfall. And so as Mr. Wack said, this contracted funds that we're putting into the budget that we're asking the board to approve is for those shortfalls right now. So we know when we don't have psychologists and social workers in place, there's a need, right? There's a need for our students, there's a need for assessments, there's, you know, just so many needs. And so we've, we're asking for more contracted services so that we are able to provide the services to our students and also to do all of those other roles that school psychologists and social workers do, like our assessments for child find for identification of special education services. So how we determine where those employees are going to go basically is based on need, right? So if we have a school who has more assessments that need to be done, or more students who are requiring services, we would put those students in those schools. Many times we have school psychologists or school social workers that go out on FMLA, and we are not able to find subs per se in-house, so that's where we use our contracted services. So we do it based on need, both on what's outlined in school quality plans and then according to the needs of individual schools.
So from a budget perspective, do we have a number so that we understand, so we have, we're going to have our standing open positions, our employees? We're going to contract to assist in fulfilling those needs? Do we have a understanding or number from a budgetary perspective of what that cost is?
Yes, and I would note, much at how they arrived at the estimate for this budget is by what we've actually been spending but hadn't budgeted for in previous years, because we, this isn't the first time. You know, the shortfall's been with us, and so understanding that it wasn't soon going to be a problem we're not struggling with, we wanted to be proactive in budget for it, where we've been working to pull money where we could in the current budget because it is a significant need. So the team is trying to be proactive here, and so they were able to, the budget figure that was given for this recommended budget is based on what has actually been used on average in the past two years, if that makes sense.
It does. So I can find that number.
Yes.
And then my second question, let's see what slide is on slide seven. Can you share with me more insight into tuition increase for Maggie Walker Governor's School? Are we absorbing some costs? What are we doing there?
Maggie Walker's increasing tuition about 5% per student.
And so are we absorbing some of that cost? Is it 5% that we're absorbing?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
That's all that I have.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Atkins. Ms. Ogborne?
Thank you. On the Maggie Walker front, I think if I'm remembering correctly, this also includes additional slots.
We funded the slots last year.
Last year.
And then this year, it's a tuition increase.
Tuition increase.
So I think it's important to understand that number because it's based on that increased number, which is more than we funded in the past.
Right. Yeah, and it's interesting, being third, a lot of the questions that they've asked already, I was going to, but when we go to eliminating the fees on this same slide, what's, how much is that costing us to absorb these fees? Can, I mean, I haven't, I'm not going to find it on which page in the book, but do you know it offhand, how much we're absorbing in the budget to eliminate these fees, which I am so in favor of? I, you know, this is such a, I know it's been a goal since Dr. Cashwell's day one, so I'm glad to see we're continuing that work.
So we'll definitely follow up, and again, I had, the budget staff kind of went through all the different fees in the fee schedule, had a collaborative group where, got leadership as well as principals, because there are certain fees, like a $4 fee, that where the cost of administering and collecting that fee might negate the value to the school activity fund. So where we increased... So where we've increased centrally in the secondary education budget, the ability to purchase centrally for things like PE uniforms or things like that, that we feel could be purchased centrally and not have the financial secretaries and the principals have to deal with that at the individual school level.
That makes so much more sense. It's a much more efficient way, so I'm glad to see that. On the next one, the relationships, the content management system for the website, can you tell us a little bit more about that?
Good afternoon. Yes, the content management system will allow us to have better functionality for our public, for the end users. Right now, we have, we use WordPress, and it requires the communications office primarily to be updating information. And so by using a content management system, it has some of those drag-and-drop functionalities that department staff can be designated to update individual pages with information more quickly. And again, using the functionality of searching and just the layout and updating the page in general is going to improve the experience for people visiting our site.
Well, I mean, our website is used by so many people. I think it's great that we're making it a little more user-friendly, so I appreciate that.
It is, and it does integrate with translation services, so the page can translate. We have that for a few languages now, and that will continue with the new content management.
Okay, great. And my only other question was about the community resource coordinators, but I think we're going to get that information.
You may hear about that in the next presentation, unless you would like to add anything about that now, or...
That's okay. I'll wait, and we'll get it in the next, yeah, I just want to know more about it.
Yeah, and I think she'll be excited to share, Adrian will be excited to share.
Thank you, Madam Chair, that's all for me.
Thank you, Ms. Ogborne, Mrs. Shae.
Thank you, Ms. Cincella. I know that the superintendent and her team were looking at adjustments on the stipend scale for our employees. Is that tied to March compensation, or do we have any report out on that?
I'm sorry, March compensation?
Sorry, we, we're going to look at the stipend, the extra stipend compensation that we do for many of our staff. Do we have information there, or is that held with the UPP information?
But part of your budget document that you have before you, it has a list of all extended responsibilities, and there are a couple of new ones that will be in fiscal year 2024.
Okay, Ms. Bolden's right behind you.
As an intro.
And there are also several stipends that we need to review. Generally, you would call it a desk audit, and we need to review several in tandem, so I don't believe we will have that ready for this budget go around.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, it can't be implemented, but you may not see it reflected here, but what you do see are some additional responsibility pieces in your budget above and beyond what were there previously.
So for example, if we had to take an extended responsibility from grade 23 to 24, that might be something we could accommodate without adjusting the budget as not being material next year.
Great, thank you. And I will, now that we have our book today, I will review all of those. But, so if you don't know this off the top of your head, I will look, but I know pre-COVID we had, I believe they were called academic officers that worked in tangent and tandem with our high school athletics to ensure VHS eligibility. Do we know if those stipends came back?
I can't speak to that one specifically. I know that there was a team, and Dr. Grant worked with the principals and really digging into what were all the positions there, what was still needed. A number of them had been in place an awfully long time and either weren't being utilized, or there was a greater need than what was actually met. So I know they're actually around, for example, the security designee for each building, there was some revamping there and looking at the associated compensation, previous positions that had been in place for, I want to say webmaster was what it was called, but looking at really that position had evolved so much. So there are definitely a number that have, I don't want to say returned, because they're almost different, but are similar to something that had been there prior. So I don't know about that one specifically, but I'll let you know, I'll follow up.
Well, and now that I have the book, I look forward to reviewing it. Thank you.
That's the digital communication liaison is one of the new ones.
Yes, which maybe had previously been webmaster. So my point is some title for title may not appear similar because they've really been revamped based on the feedback from our school personnel who said, "Well, really, you know, while that position was important, it really evolved into something much different over time." And so we looked both at the title, the responsibilities, and the associated compensation. So some things have titles that may be unfamiliar, but we're happy to provide any additional detail and questions there.
Well, thank you, and I appreciate the fact that you really engaged our principals in that review, as they know what's being utilized within their building and their staff. I appreciate the additional add-on for ELL staffing. I know that's been a focus last year and this year, and much needed. In last year's budget, we decided to waive tuition for staff's children that were coming to HCPS. Is that included in this year's budget?
Yes, it is, and I believe that'll be communicated to individuals as part of that process, which launches January 30th, this week, yes, confirmed.
Awesome, thank you. I know quite a few staff have reached out and expressed how much they appreciate that and how much it's been a game changer in terms of deciding to stay within RICO. And as we know, our people are our greatest resource. I appreciate that investment in them. And then I know, Dr. Cashwell, you and I had talked about TST positions and kind of similar to looking at those stipends that were no longer used and revamped. I know you looked into kind of old positions that weren't being used to convert into TST. Are we looking to continue that in the budget, those positions?
Yes, certainly, while there are a number of positions highlighted here as new and additional, we continue to work within our current budget, much like Dr. Hughes explained the answer to the PBIS question. So not everything counts on new money, but how are we reallocating funds we already have? And much to that point, yes, increasing the number of TSTs, particularly as they conserve our elementary schools, has been a priority. Mr. Pritchard did work to accomplish adding a number of new TSTs even in this current fiscal year, and we'll continue to work to grow that number.
Yes, we're converting existing positions in the operations portfolio to become technology support technicians for...
Great, well, I appreciate that work at our elementary school level. I know that some of our coaches had shared that they were kind of filling the gap there, and so this will allow our coaches to focus on coaching and also better support our elementary staff with technology. So that's all for me, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Shae. I appreciate you bringing up the employee variance waivers. Had a lot of interest in my district as well, so that's coming, what, Jan, next week, on Monday, right? Will it come, will the announcement come to those already enrolled in the program, those employees already using the program, and then...
And our announcement of the program as well, for those who may not have known or maybe knew too.
Okay, so all of it comes on Monday, January 30th. So exciting. We've done so many tremendous things with the budget, the one-time bonuses, the paying of renewal fees, higher summer school rates for our teachers, higher substitute rates on Fridays, covering class stipends. Do we, are we looking at the covering of classes? I know we've heard a lot from educators about, given our staffing crisis, right? Are we looking at putting those stipends as more part of their duties? That's not a way to put it, that's not a good way to say it. Those stipends, instead of just covering classes, are principals in buildings looking at a way to help us be more efficient maybe in our budgeting of that, where the employee knows this is now what I'm going to do versus duties on top of covering, on top of duties? What is going on in our buildings with that, and how are we going to compensate our employees?
I mean, certainly, yeah, there are lots of layers to that, very important thought. And so certainly, it's an ongoing conversation, and we know that we have compensated and we will continue, if that's part of the question, to compensate teachers who may be covering for a colleague during their planning time. You know, our goal though is to make sure nobody's missing their planning time, and so, you know, our hope is we get to a position where that doesn't occur, but we certainly want to compensate those who have done that. And then to, as far as duties, duties wouldn't be the same as planning time, and those are typically assigned, but what we want to do is make sure that we're preserving teacher time as we can, and making sure that their schedules are set up in a fashion where we're not putting an undue burden on our staff. And we know that some of the staffing shortages mean that the colleagues are, you know, having to work together to, in buildings to make up for that, and so sometimes even that compensation doesn't feel like enough. So our goal is to eliminate the need for that to happen, and of course, with master scheduling, make sure that our building principals are cognizant of, making sure teachers have their allotted planning time. And it may mean that the way they schedule duties in their building, to your point, looks different than it has in the past, but we continue to support our principals and their master schedule endeavors to make sure we're not stepping on anything related to teacher planning time and are being cognizant of the amount of time we're asking of duties and those sorts of things.
Thank you for that detailed response. I know that while we, we can't wait until we are fully staffed, we are certainly not there, so knowing that that money is in the budget and that folks are thinking about how to readjust schedules for our employees really does make a difference, as well as absolutely protecting the planning time for instruction. I would like to ask, just kind of piggyback on something Reverend Cooper said on Slide 3, he mentioned highlighting for, in, not necessarily maybe in a budget presentation way for our communities, but I would like to have, because just what we're doing this year in 2024 really doesn't tell a lot of the story of the supports we've put in place, so I'd like to ask if you could add some highlights when you do whatever you're doing outside of the budget presentation for communities, that you also include 2023, because we really did a lot of work in the support resources that you spoke a lot to, Reverend Cooper.
The team actually put together at one point for, it may have been some sort of community presentation, a nice one-pager that looked like, particularly spoke to the academic supports around, you know, intentional efforts that you see echoed in this budget, but we know were present in the prior two budgets, really focused intentional work, not just from our Esser funding, but some of it was from that to really meet student individual needs, both academically and socially emotionally. So we can share that with the board again and update it to reflect upon any approval of this budget, how that will impact the next school year.
Yeah, that took a multi-year approach, I believe, like using 2020 as a baseline. All the positions we've added, we added about 80 instructional positions in 2023 budget, but these, we're adding about 50 more full-time positions in 2024 in this proposal.
And as you do, as you're doing that for the academic growth, I would also like to ask that you do it for safety and wellness, so that we can have in a document the complete picture of all the things we've been doing for safety, that it's ongoing, right? The safety pieces in our division.
Sure.
And then that's all I have. Thank you so much for the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Wack, members of DLT, all of whom were a part of answering questions, preparing this budget, and of course, the entire team with us, and Maria, who's not with us, give her our thanks as well.